The date is October 12, 2010, and the time is 7:30. Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
May we have the roll call, please, Dale?
(inaudible)
Here.
Counsel Vice President Eddie?
Here.
Counselwoman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
Counselwoman Whaley?
Here.
All members present?
Thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes of previous meetings from the work session of September 27, 2010. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the regular session from September 27.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular session for September 27.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, the consent agenda, if anybody would like to remove anything. Jim? Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with removing Communication B.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. First is License A is a resolution granting a vichyling license for the year beginning December 1st. Oh, you know what, why don't we move, I'm gonna skip A and we're gonna move on to B. Is a resolution granting a Class F 19-hour beverage license to the Wildlife Refuge, Wildlife Rehabitators Association of Rhode Island, 25 Shermentown Road, Saunders Town, Rhode Island, for the fall wildlife celebration to be held on Saturday, November 13th, from 6 to 9 at the Elks Club on Belmont Avenue. The application is by Chi Yan Chan. Jan, Vice President, and this is new. Is anybody here to speak on this? Please come forward to the microphone. And state your name.
Chi Chan.
Okay. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your function?
It's a fundraising. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. We take care of wildlife, and in order for us to take care of all the animals, we need fundraising. It's an event for fundraising. It's a wine tasting. So different vendors are donating the wine and beer. And we are serving through Elks Club and through their bartenders. But the vendors are requesting that we get this permit, so I'm here to ask for it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? No? Jim?
Will you have some of this wildlife on display?
Actually, we, no. It's prohibited that we take our patient out to show the public. But we actually have a guest speaker, and she will be bringing a couple of the education animal. She'll have a red-tailed hawk, a great-horned owl, and a screech owl at the presentation. But those are with a permit.
Great, terrific.
Great. Any other questions? No? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion.
License B?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck, I hope you make a lot of money.
Thank you. Should I stop by the town hall to pick up the permit or what should, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next is License Item C, a resolution granting a vichyling license to Global Montello Corp. Group, DBA Mobile Mart, 3079 Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval from the fire chief. The application is by Louise Marcus Esquire, 33 College Hill Road, and this is new. Is, oh.
Good evening, Louise Marcus.
Hi, Louise. So, would you like to tell us a little bit about your license application?
It is basically to continue doing business as the former owner had been operating. And as I had mentioned at the last meeting, they sell coffee and packaged goods, therefore the vichyling license.
What is the difference between the two? Dale, can you help me out here, the difference between these two requests?
You don't, you don't, well, the two requests, well, last time I issued papers, I was failed. I, we were under the impression that she was not selling coffee, and then I believe she expressed that she was selling coffee, and if she's preparing coffee, she was kind of fishing.
Great, all right, thank you.
Right.
All right, any other questions for Louise, then? No?
Motion to approve License C.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously, and you can go make some coffee.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Next is License Item D, is a resolution granting a private detective license to Roland Mathis Joseph Daigle, 165 Dilibur Avenue, North Kingston, and the application is by said above. And this is a new application. Is anybody here to talk on this? Oh, please come forward.
Good evening, how are you? Oops, sorry. That wasn't me, that was the mic, I'm hoping. I'm in trouble, then. Where do you want me to begin?
So, I assume you're Mr. Roland Mathis Joseph Daigle?
Yeah, Roland Mathis Joseph Daigle, yep.
So, tell us a little bit about your application, and I'm sure the chief has probably been through this with you.
Yes, I spoke to Chief Vespa, and he already did the background research. I've held a private investigator license since 1991. The only reason I'm applying here is I just recently moved to South Kingston, and by law the licenses are issued by the town, but are good through anywhere, good throughout the state. Basically, I'm also a state court constable. I was working in Washington DC with Congressman Landriven for eight years, and I recently left there, and now I'm working in armed security, electric boat. I'm still moonlighting doing detective work, 'cause a lot of the attorneys I work with for the past 20 years still use my services. So if you could also amend the address that's on this particular application. The application was kind of antiquated, and it showed a business address, and that address is Electric Boats address, and I'd prefer that not to be licensed issued to that address, at Dilibur Avenue. If you could issue the license to my residence at Grand Isle Drive.
Grand Isle Drive?
Yep.
Unit 621, yep. 621. Dale, is that all right to amend it like that? You have that all? Still not in Kingston, correct?
No, 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 I'm living in South Kingston, yep, correct. It's right here, the South County Commons.
I'm sorry, yes.
Feel free to ask away, 'cause I got a lot of experience on it, so.
Okay, Carol, go ahead.
So you're a constable, statewide?
Yes, I am. Statewide, yes, I am, statewide, yep.
Process, summonses?
Yeah, I still do work for a couple of attorneys. My specialty was evictions and bench warrants.
Oh.
But I still do some, I still do evictions in between, like I'll catch one in the morning before I go to work.
So you go early?
Oh, yeah. I go very early, yep. Eight o'clock in the morning, yep. Usually I wrap them up by around noon time, and then I'll go to work at second shift.
Very good. Chief is coming forward.
Hey, Chief, how are you, sir?
Madam President, members of the council, the applicant, Mr. Daigle, has been gainfully employed as a private detective for the past 13 years. He previously held licenses in the town of West Greenwich and Coventry. And as he just indicated, he now lives in South Kingston, and he wants to keep his private detective license active, and that's what's before you tonight. He's eminently qualified under the statute. I happen to know Mr. Daigle, I know some of his clients, I think you do too. So, from a law enforcement perspective, I would have no objection to him being licensed.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to move on to, all the consent agendas behind us. So now we're gonna move to the public hearings. And so we're gonna open up the public hearing, and Public Hearing Item A is a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. Class B vichyler liquor license, the application for the Class B vichyler liquor license for the year beginning December 1st, 2010, by Jero's Far East LLC, 501 High Street, Peastale, by Yu Kwang Young, managing member for the first-floor dining room in Bar area, and is further defined in the site plan on file by the South, by the town clerk's office. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Wanna come forward and state your names for the record?
Raymond Van Heen.
Yu Kwang Young.
Okay. So you wanna tell us a little bit about the business and what you're gonna be, your plans are for Jero's, now Jero's Far East?
Yeah, well, we purchased the restaurant in April, and we've pretty much got it, the place. Bringing everything up to code, handicap bathrooms, handicap ramps, all the electrical. The place is pretty close to burning down, according to my electricians.
Really?
Yeah. Ninety percent of the wires, 20% of the wires didn't go anywhere, but they were still in boxes and stuff. And basically, we'd like to open up a full-service restaurant, you know, and just bring something to Peastale. I've worked in Washington County in the restaurant business for 25 years. And we just really like to see someone do something with it, you know?
Used to be very, very successful, definitely. Are there any questions? Counsel Carol.
Is it Raymond, what was your last name, please?
Van Heen.
Van Heen. And what restaurant business have you been involved in for 25 years?
I started on Carries when I was 14, and I became manager in the early 90s, and I worked there for 23 years. And we planned on moving to Florida, but that didn't work out, we have a house down there. So I ended up leaving, my position was filled, and I worked at a Torjos for a year and a half. And I've just, you know, I know all the managers of all the restaurants and stuff, and ended in Meeting County, and he wanted to open up a restaurant, so stupid or not stupid, we got Jero's in, you know, and opened up a can of worms, but, you know, we'd like to bring something here, you know?
No, it's great, because, I mean, I remember Jero's from years ago, even when I was at URI, and I know even before that it was here. But I like the name, Jero's Far East.
Yeah, you know, we wanted to, it will be different, so we hope we don't offend anyone who remembers Jero over the years. But we figured, you know, we try and keep the name, and, you know, we plan on serving, I mean, we're still working on the menu, but we're thinking of pub, pub food, sandwiches, stuff like that, with an Asian twist. So.
Sounds good.
Polly, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I was intrigued to know, any area in the Far East that you're leaning towards?
Chinese.
Chinese, okay. And are you having sandwiches, you said?
Yeah, we, like I said, the menu we're still working on, and it doesn't look like we'll be open for, you know, quite some time with the amount of work we're doing. But, yeah, we're just thinking of, just trying to put an Asian twist, you know, on pub-type food, you know?
When do you plan to open?
It's so hard to say. Like, we're, pretty much the whole building's gonna be new, except for the outside shingles.
So you have a lot to do.
It's, yeah, we've replaced beams and joists and all the electrical, all the heating, all the plumbing. We're hoping January, February.
Oh, great.
You know, depending on our budget restraints, but it's taking longer. But like I said, the building's gonna be new.
Thank you. Jim?
Are you having some help from the building owner with the build-out, or is there some work out there, so you don't have a delayed opening that heads into next summer?
Yeah, it, pretty much, we hired Wilcox Brothers Construction. They've been there, Kenny and I have been there every day.
But it's your, you're paying for all of it, for all the improvements?
Yes. Well, Kenny is. I would be the manager of the restaurant. And it's, you know, we've spent more of our budget so far than we really planned on at this point. But like I said, once you do one thing, it's hard not to do the next thing, or the next thing. You know, we have to, the whole entire fire, everything, we have to replace everything in fire code, because there's a legal one apartment upstairs. So everything's gonna be fire-coded, which is why, my understanding is why Dan Driscoll, who used to own business, gave the liquor license back, because he didn't want to put the money into fire-coating it, even though the building wasn't open, to rent the apartment.
Are you gonna continue a room with just a bar, as well as tables, and a back room with tables, or are you changing?
Yeah, it, where, if you know the building, where the bathrooms used to be on the right, that's all gonna be booths, it's gonna be an L-shaped bar, it's gonna be opened up a lot more, so it will just be more of an open concept to the back. There'll be a few tables in the back, we're almost doubling the size of the kitchen. So, right now, we're not sure exactly what the seating's gonna be, but the old Jero's was fire-coded for 86, so we'll be around 72 what they were.
Did the jukebox come with the?
No, they, no, it did come with it, and then the company came to get it back, 'cause it was supposed to be returned.
All right, too bad, too bad, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I'm gonna open it up to the public now, 'cause this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
Come forward. Forward, so, I'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is a public informational hearing. Oh, I gotta make a motion on that, I closed it, but we didn't move on it, did we? Well, I gotta do, wait a minute, all right, so let's go to the public informational hearing for the, for the public discussion relative to the need for the additional liquor license within the community. So I'll open up the, the floor on this one. Steve, this is just, if, I don't know if you wanted to go through this public informational hearing on, on the licenses, that would explain what we have for the licenses thus far in the town.
Council establishes on a annual basis, which is subject to amendment, resolution that establishes the number of licenses available in each class of liquor licenses. If the council is looking to amend the resolution that stands for the, for the council during any given period, it needs to hold a public informational hearing, so members of the public can advise the council on their perspective on the need for additional liquor licenses in the community. That is what is scheduled each time that there is a request to expand the number of licenses. This evening, it is a bit different. There was a license available that was not picked up during the existing license year. Therefore, there really would be no need to increase the number of licenses to be able to provide a new license that was before you this evening. If the council is, is willing to grant the new license, they could do that simply by affirming, after the passing of the license, affirming the number of licenses in each of the classes. But at this point, it would be incumbent on the council to ask the public if they have comments on the advisability of any amendment to the existing resolution in place, setting the number of licenses by class.
Okay. So does the council have any questions for Steve, before I move to the public? Okay, so I will move this open to the public, if anybody has any questions relative to the need for additional liquor licenses, if they'd like to come forward, discuss that now. There's none, then I'll move to, for a motion to close this.
Second.
I'm sharing the same microphone. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, move to, I guess, 13A, and the new business section. And this is, 13A is a new, a resolution affirming or amending the town liquor license rules and regulations. Section 1, the number of licenses for each clash shall be authorized as indicated below. And right now, we're looking at vichyling licenses, and there are 23 of them, and that would be the number that really does not need to be changed. So if the council wants to make a motion on this?
I move that we keep the vichyling license at 23.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to explain a little bit about-
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, Polly, I thought you were done.
That one, one business shamrock says, did not pick up their license, and so we have a license that is free for the new Jero's Far East. Is that okay, Carol?
No, that's fine. I mean, we're not increasing or decreasing, we're keeping it the same. I think that's what we just want to explain here, and thank you, Polly.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Catherine.
Jim?
No, I'm pleased to join the approval of this. This is a lot of our history, Jero's, and we can only, only wish them much success. I think history in Peastale needs part of this for their revival.
Yes, and I think it's very smart for you to keep the Jero's name in it, because everybody knows where it is, definitely. Definitely. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, no other discussion, then? Are all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That new business A is passed unanimously. So we go back to the public hearing item A to approve, so do I have a motion to approve Public Hearing?
Motion to approve Public Hearing A.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. And then, we don't need to make another move on B, do we? License 6A? Back to 6A. If you're due to a council meeting, there's a lot of paper shuffling tonight, but. License A, we're going back to, is a resolution granting a vichyling license for the year beginning December 1st, 2010, to Jero's Far East LLC, 501 High Street, Peastale, subject to issuance of certificate of occupancy. The application is by, I'm gonna mess your name up, but Yi Kwang Young, managing member from 3 Birchwood Drive, Cranston, and again, this is a new license item. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of License A. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? No, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Then we go back to B. Under the public hearing, can I have a motion to approve the public hearing for the discussion relative to the needs? I think we already did that, though. We're all set with that one, aren't we? I always do two in closing on those. Are we all set with that on B? Okay. Congratulations, you actually have your vichyling license and your approval for your liquor license, so.
Good.
All right? Good luck. That was a lot of working up. Yes, we'll see you after the new year, I guess.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't forget, ribbon cuttings are very important to invite all of us.
Okay, I'm a little out of breath, but next, we're moving on to a communication dated September 22nd, 2010, from Keith W. Stokes, Executive Director for the Rhode Island Economic Development Corporation, in response to the council's resolution adopted on September 13th, 2010, regarding the EDC's job creation guarantee program, and requesting an opportunity to address the council as received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We were going to, we discussed this during the work session, and we were gonna place it on the agenda for the, on November 22nd.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Jim?
Yeah, certainly want to thanks, thank Mr. Stokes for getting back to us. I also think he was good enough, kind enough, to give us the application forms, maybe this is something we should also share with our Economic Development Commission. Number of small businesses in town, I don't know how we contact them, but a lot of growth businesses, maybe there's some message we can put out on our website, but certainly it was encouraging to have this quick response. Anyway, we'll go from there, Steve may have some thoughts beyond that, too.
We certainly can put that information on the town's website, and I think we can also forward it to Chamber of Commerce and to-
Absolutely.
-the town's Economic Development Committee.
That'd be great.
That's, you know, the council would direct that.
So it's moved to the November 22nd, the resolution, and then the application forms to the Chamber and EDC. Is that correct? Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion now? No, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, Jim removed B from the communication, so this is a resolution adopted on September 7th by the Jamestown Town Council in opposition to the Weaver's Cove Energy Proposal to build an LNG site in the Mountain Ho Bay as received and placed on file. And Jim?
Yeah, I think we've, obviously, we've supported these resolutions, and I guess I get more confused every time I see a new one. And the thing that just, which I don't understand, why a company of this size, this magnitude, who's this wealthy, and I'm looking at the third whereas on the second page up from the bottom, where it says Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, blah, blah, blah. It is unclear to what extent, if any, the LNG supply is needed to either meet the region's gas supply or reduce fossil fuel in the region. I just guess that, why would a company push forward light like this if that was, in fact, a true statement? This makes no sense to me whatsoever. I can't approve this with that in there, without trying to understand why this company would push forward with a billion-dollar project if our needs are more than well-handled in the New England region. I just don't understand it. If anyone knows, I would appreciate-
Oh, I don't, I would be able to guess what their, their thoughts, processes. So are you asking that, if we send a letter to question that to them, or?
I'd just, I'd love to know what studies they are, have to support that. I mean, that's, I mean, this makes no sense, when you think about it. I mean, why would this company fight, you know, the Fighting Conservation Law Foundation, all of the communities, the bay, marine life, why, you know? Why would they keep fighting this? And especially when you have a statement like that, showing that the economics of this doesn't make any sense. I just, I'm bewildered.
Okay.
What I'll do is abstain. I just hate something thrown at me light like that, that I can't analyze at all.
Okay. All right. Do you want to send abstention, do we want to do about this? Is that what you're asking to do with it? Okay. I mean, unless you want to send a letter to them and, with your question, I-
It is a good question.
I mean, it just makes no sense, you would never go forward with a business, but this makes no sense.
Well, why don't we, we can send a letter, I have no problem.
Send a letter.
But we may get a whole bunch of, a couple thousand pages.
That's true. And we're gonna put you in charge of that one. To brief us.
Maybe Steve knows the LNG world, maybe he can fill us in on-
So you just want to place it on file, then, as it's done in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so that would be your motion, then, to put it, as what it says on, as, placed on file? Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'd love to find out why, but none of us would have the time, and they know more than we do.
I bet it would be a million-page document.
Yeah, I know.
And it would just cost us a lot of ink to print it up, and-
But, but talk about something that just completely sends all the rest of this, on files, fine.
It's ridiculous, I agree with you on that. All right, so it's been moved and seconded by Polly. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is a communication received October 6 from Councilman James O'Neill, requesting adoption of a resolution concerning the school committee's teachers' contract negotiations adoption of a resolution concerning the school committee's teachers' contract negotiations with the NEA, as received, placed on file, and the town council further directs, and the council, anybody wants to talk on this, so Jim? Jim?
Okay, we spoke at length about my resolution at the work session, and this, what I wanted to do was get a resolution approval from the town council to the school committee, who is currently underway with negotiations with the National Education Association, and my intent with this is to make everyone understand here that the contract that was signed three years ago has been one that has meant great difficulty, not only for the schools and programs and budgeting, but also for the town council, and as a result, our town departments, I think, are operating at a skeletal basis. It's been a contract that's been pretty expensive, and what I was concerned about initially when I put this forward, is that I think everyone knew at the time what was happening, and, and I was absolutely shocked, and as you know, I got very concerned back in January and February of 2008, but also, too, I was, Mrs. Eddy, who was President of the council at that time, had the same comments as I did, and I'll just quote her, "Town Council President was Eddy this week criticized as premature and overly generous the three-year contract negotiated, negotiated by the teachers' union and the school committee." Eddy said she did not understand why the committee reached a deal more than six months early without waiting for the governor's, Governor Kachery's budget to release, that could be, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in deficits, and Mrs. Eddy, again, just too much, too soon, and of course, I was the same way, and it just put all of us in a difficult position, we couldn't do anything about it, it was signed when we were enjoying our weekend in February, it was a done deal, and unfortunately, at the time, did not increase the health co-pay, which had a range between three and six years, and that held to this date with an average of about five point four percent for a co-pay. So, so the union did very well with their negotiations, they got very high pay raises for those in the tenth step and above, a three point zero five, one percent on top of the step increases averaging seven percent, it was just simply a very, very expensive contract. And so, my intent of this resolution was not to trap the next council and the next school committee, and I'm certainly willing to take out a few of my whereas's, but my concern is that we can't let ourselves fall into a lame duck situation here, where the school committee might in fact move forward with the contract and not know how we feel at this level, that this level being, being the leadership of the town of South Kingstown. And I'm just gonna summarize here with my, you know, resolved issues, what I wanted was to have the town council here to suggest, advise, whatever combination of words, I did not want to have a co-pay of less than twenty percent, I wanted at the minimum, that would be a minimum, a minimum salary freeze. Buybacks are another issue, but maybe there are better, better ways to approach this, but certainly the salaries and health co-pay are incredibly important. Yes, I did refer to Barrington, North Kingstown, and Warwick, who Barrington's had twenty percent co-pay for a couple of years, North Kingstown went from fifteen to twenty percent, Warwick just went to twenty percent, I think this is reasonable, and I think it's fair. And I wanted the council to actually take some pressure off of the school committee. If the school committee knows that the council is, understands the severity, and I mean severity, of the state's financial condition, this is really frightening, you probably know, much of the stimulus money, hundreds of millions, will disappear over the next couple of years, we've got just a pension increase this alone, this coming year alone of sixty million dollars, it's gonna add another million dollars to our budget, education funding formula, we're not done with this one yet, I certainly hope education boss Gist stays with us, but I am worried that we're gonna see a stronger one from the House and Senate that would take more money from communities like South Kingstown, so we really need to batten down the hatches, so what this is, is a message to the school committee, that you've got to get tough here, you've got to hold ground, that you will have a town council here who will support some very difficult negotiations that you're going to have to come through with on behalf of the taxpayers of this community. And lastly, I didn't want any leverage or torque used as part of my resolution here, I didn't want, I've always been a fan of neighborhood schools, I think this council is, I've been outspoken on that, I prefer to see a South Road open and a Curtis Corner closed, but I don't want to see any budgets coming at us that would recommend any elementary school close, so that would be part of my resolution, which I'm going to tweak and work on a little bit, but this is the nuts and the bolts of it. My concern is, honestly, I think all of you know about the big picture here, I know folks think the school committee looks at, you know, home prices, unemployment, differential with the private workers out here with very little pension and healthcare, Social Security, if you read the papers today, two years in a row, zero percent COLA, I mean, I mean, things are very difficult out there, and the school committee needs to be reminded that, that this council has got to look at all aspects of the financial condition of our constituents out here. So hence, that's why my resolution is, is hopefully a work in progress here, hopefully I have the support of the council to continue working on this, but that is the direction that I'm going, and I think it would be simply the greatest danger, great danger, for us, and I cumul- and I'm looking at all the years that we've been involved here, Kathy and Polly, eight years, Ella, gosh, what, twelve, fourteen years, school committee, town council, I've been here ten years, you can't get more, Carol's new, just joined us in '08, but you can't get folks who have been through these budget discussions, I don't think you could ever find as many hours put in on this as we have, and this is a danger, a danger of no action being taken, and I think the position, our position, needs to be known by the school committee, and I will remind the school committee that we do have the leverage, we are the bottom line, you can certainly tweak how you want line items, but we've got the bottom lines, and that is for the budget, and that is our leverage, and I'm willing to go out on a limb and use it, and I hope the school committee will back me on, on a strong and firm resolution once I rework some of the language. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things, I think we're all very aware of the difficult economic times, and my concern as a lawyer for the past twenty-four years is, some of your language, Jim, is polarizing, to say the least, and what, level heads generally negotiate the best contracts for everyone, once parties get angry and they take sides, then it's very difficult to negotiate, and I think that the process has to be allowed to take, to go through the different stages, and I believe that the school committee, the teachers' union, the teachers, the town council, we all understand that, you know, there's gonna have to be concessions made, I mean, and some of those concessions are gonna be in the, the co-pay of their healthcare and salaries, and I think that, working together, the parties will come to a conclusion that will suit the town and best serve the town, because I do believe that all parties are mainly interested in that goal, so, and I don't think there's anybody who doesn't know that the educational funding formula is coming at us, and it's not going to be a positive financial situation for South Kingstown, and with that and the loss of continued state aid, there are a lot of issues that are gonna have to be looked at by the town council, and the teachers' unions, and the school committee, and the teachers, and the taxpayers of South Kingstown, and with that said, I think all parties can keep a level head and come out with a contract that's best for everyone.
I'd like to just reiterate that we are all aware of, you know, the economic times, and there are a lot of things in this resolution, Jim, that I could support, you know, that I've been supporter of the neighborhood schools, and keeping Wakefield School open, all of our schools, actually. I do know that the, in our packet tonight, the school committee is looking for, and I think Kathy will probably bring this up later, school committee is putting together a committee to look at where their, you know, budget cuts in this economic times could be, so I think that putting together that subcommittee and maintaining the quality education that we have here in South Kingstown, so I think that that, putting that subcommittee to- together is really going to be, you know, very favorable to looking at the economic times that we have. So, we talked about this resolution, and Jim, you have agreed to bring it back with some changes, I believe, so, if you'd like, I would like to have a motion to place it on file until Jim can bring it back with some, some modifications here.
I just wanted to add one more thing, I think we discussed this in the work session, the importance of the school committee and the town council meeting as these, as these negotiations are going through, and, as they're going through these negotiations in the effort to, to come up with a contract, and I think so long as everyone's informed, that certainly will help the situation.
You mean in December, when we-
Right, but I think we discussed even meeting-
When they negotiate, that's-
Right, no, 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 but I mean, just staying informed separately of that.
Any other discussion? Jim?
Ella, on the, that's strategic subcommittee that- There's seven folks there that have to make decisions, and every time you dilute, dilute more voices, and it's always good to take information in, but sometimes, a group of seven, or a group of five of us, we have to make decisions, and that's my concern there, it's just delaying it and spreading it out, good idea, long run, seven of them in the negotiating committee have to make decisions. Carol mentioned a few things, and I can't disagree about the legal look at this, I think the polarization comes from incredible frustration. Counsel, and there was another quote back, when I just quoted Mrs. Eddy, there was another quote by the chairman of the school committee, Dr. Mega, and I'll just quote here quickly, defending that particular agreement at the time with no increase of co-pay and the very handsome salary increases, and he said, he wanted to ensure that his focus was fixed, and I'm quoting here, "fixed on student achievement, not on negotiations." That is frightening, because unfortunately, education is money, education is the financial health, well-being of the state and the town, and that's why, Carol, if you wonder at times why I'm just, level-headed, hasn't worked before, I'm sure if we asked Steve if there was some state law that we could have, I'd love to see the contract Steve was just presented with by the NEA for the town, I'd love to be able to have something like that, public, then the public would really see, but who's got the level heads, and it's I who have the level head, because they really need to see how some of these early negotiations on paper, which we cannot disclose, which is- So, anyway, yes, a whole bunch of combinations, resolutions together, and hopefully that will keep everyone here on this council firm in their belief, the school committee here has really got to defend, defend this community, and believe me, it's not gonna be easy, we're looking at serious money that we've gotta find over the next few years. Thank you.
Polly?
Yes, I just want to say, I think the times are very different, three years ago when we were working, when the school committee was working on their contract, none of the, we had no concept of how serious the economic downturn was going to be, and, you know, it was too bad that it turned out the way it did, of course, but I think everyone nowadays is well aware of the economic condition for themselves, for their schools, for their town, and I think the teachers, certainly, we have wonderful teachers, and I think that they are well aware of the situation, and I think that we'll have quite a different team, and I think we'll have quite a different results this year. But I'm glad, Jim, you brought this up, because I do think it's important for everyone to realize how the council feels, and how the school committee feels. Thank you.
Thank you Polly. Jim, I think it's, it's an appropriate discussion that needs to be had, and I just, you know, it's just inappropriate language, and we discussed that in the work session of how this was put together, and I do have to just reiterate, too, with the school committee, that they've had zero budget increases in the last couple of budget sessions, that they haven't overspent their budget, that there's been handshake agreements, that the money that they had has stayed with the, with the budget and goes into the next year's budget, so they're doing everything that they possibly can on their end, and I know that they're being very fiscally responsible just by looking at that data, but again, their view, too, is that they, they want to see student achievement, and I can't blame Tony Mega when he wants to see student achievement, and he has also, you know, worked with a zero budget percent increase, and, you know, not overspent, and has honored the handshake agreement over the past few years, and, and that's what the school committee, they wouldn't be there in place if they weren't concerned about the bottom line, which is, is student achievements, which is what everybody pays for, the taxes in this town, is that, you know, it helps your property tax in the long run if these kids are scoring well on the kneecaps, and I think that they're trying to balance getting those grades up there with the budget constraints that are upon them, and any one of them would have to be under, living under a rock if they didn't know that they've got some serious work to do with, with the teachers' union, and the teachers' unions, I'm sure, is well aware of it, too, they've seen what's happened in other towns, and they know that it's gonna be, you know, everybody's gonna have give and take, and everybody's gonna give a little bit here and there, and it's just the way it's been these days, so I think that everybody is well aware of it, but it can't hurt to send in a message that, again, appropriate language to the school committee and reinforcing, you know, the council's concern for the taxpayers, so, with that-
If I may, and I appreciate the handshake agreement, which I was certainly very much part of long ago.
All of us have been.
Because as you know, in those early years, they were spending excess revenue, so we don't need to go into it, you know, Mr. Alfred gave us quite a spreadsheet on just how aggressive they were, and it had to come to a halt, and fortunately, this council, Mary and- Mary Polly, sorry, and Kathy, and Ella's school committee, and then that, I think they realized that this couldn't go on, we're spending money that was, Steve can explain structural deficits all day long here, but we were put into a very difficult spot with huge increases of school budgets, 2000, 2006, we averaged about seven and a half, eight percent, which is just incredible. You brought up the NEA, I certainly hope the NEA gets the message, I'm not gonna bring up politics with who they're supporting for governor, but I'm very concerned here, I hope they do get the message, we saw their activity in the primary, they were very aggressive getting rid of anybody who dared talk reason.
We'll stick with the resolution, though.
So, anyway, but that's where we are, and, yes, we care about student achievement, we're just in a situation that we're just going to have to do a lot more, with a lot less.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? Ella?
Because Jim commented on the strategic plan, Jim, and I, I give the school committee kudos for seeking the public input to, you know, protect the instructional programs and the student achievement, but also sustaining the educational vision in these tight fiscal times, so I do give the school committee kudos for putting this group together, and I just want to reiterate, it was briefly mentioned that in our discussion earlier this evening, we did talk about possibly meeting with the school committee, the superintendent on the fifteenth or sixteenth, so I think we all welcome the opportunity to talk more to the school committee.
Good point Ella, I forgot to bring that up, that's when we'll start meeting with them.
Thank you.
Again, moved and seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, we have comments from interested citizens, so if anybody would like to come forward, microphone is theirs. Don't be shy. Just state your name for the record, please.
Okay, I'm Fritz Lanz. It's, first name's Fritz, F-R-I-T-Z. So odd to have this, so, microphone amplified, last name's Lanz, L-A-N-Z. And so, I came just to talk about traffic on Kingstown Road, and just put out there just if there's thinking as to what could be done to mitigate the excessive speeding on that road, I would talk to several of you tonight, but we, my family and I moved into nine forty Kingstown Road a year ago, almost to the date, and one of the reasons why we chose Wakefield, by Houston Wakefield, is just its walkability, and so, my kids, speaking of school, my kids go to Peast Elementary School, and my youngest son goes to the Steppingstone preschool, and so my wife is usually off walking around, and, and just, it's, we've had a couple of really, really close calls with, with motorists, specifically in the crosswalks, right around, the right, the crosswalk leading to, to the library, and so just wondering if there's thought of putting in stop signs in that kind of S curve right there, I think that would be a wise, wise move, and then possibly, just thinking about other- would be a wise, wise move. And then possibly, just thinking about other, you know, mitigating, what's the right, you know, mitigating, you know, actions that are taken to just reduce, reduce speed on that road.
Well, we do have a traffic review committee-
Sure.
Commission, I should say, that meets. And Chief Espia sits on it, so I might refer you to talk to the chief-
Sure, sure.
About your concerns-
Sure.
And the group could get together and, you know, take a look at it.
Okay.
I have to say, that's kind of, that area does kind of give, sometimes the cars do come in different directions. It does get a little bit tricky, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
It might be something that is good for us to review. So when you bring it forward to us, it is something that we definitely listen to.
Okay, super.
But I'll refer you to the chief back there.
Okay.
If you know who the chief is. And you can talk to him about your concerns, unless anybody wants to add anything to.
Carol?
Yeah.
You said that your children, as you described it, were crossing the road, and the cars were very good, and they stopped. And then, one, two, and the third car was very annoyed and came whipping out. And things like that are very dangerous.
Yeah, yeah. And it's just, if it was once or twice, but it's happened a number. And then, just in talking to, you know, getting to know the other families in the neighborhood with young kids, and everyone has a story. And it's, and I'm just thinking, you know, my fear is it's gonna end badly.
Yeah, we could get it before that.
Yes. And, and just, you know, and again, I think as I, it just, to me, it's either you raise the speed limit and be honest, because people are going forty, fifty miles an hour, I'm assuming, just seeing how quickly people travel. Some people, not everyone. But either that, or just, or just, you know, finding ways to absolutely unequivocally bring down that speed, you know, just really, again, either through enforcement, or just, you know, again, traffic calming techniques, such as, you know, the city of Providence has used.
Yeah, I talked to Fritz today. Fritz or Fitz?
Fritz.
Fritz. And we were talking about the, the speed trap that the police usually put up, I hate to call it that, chief, but over by Old Mountain Fields there. And then, many times, you have the sign, the blinking sign, the LED sign, I think it is, it tells you how fast you're going. That's out there sometimes, too. That, that can be helpful at times.
Yeah.
And, but it, it's true. I mean, that, that stretch is, what is it, twenty-five miles an hour over there?
Yeah.
I think it is.
Yeah.
And most people don't go that speed.
No, don't come, yeah.
But it is a concern for kids walking, definitely.
Yeah.
Well, so, that's what I would, my next step, unless you have other things that you'd like to refer on. But usually, that would be the police chiefs, and meeting with the town engineers and so forth that review all these spots. Steve?
No, I think your advice is the proper advice. I think that we can have traffic committee review. One of the problems we'll run into is that we can't just place stop signs-
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's a state highway to begin with, so it would have to go through a state traffic committee-
Sure.
After it had been referred through the town search committee. If, if you like, you can talk with the chief, you could provide us with a letter if you want. I think we all know what the issue was.
Sure.
I think what I can do is to have that set on the next agenda-
Sure.
For discussion. And in advance of that, we will continue, we don't have speed traps, we have traffic surveillance.
Sorry.
We certainly, we move from one area to the other, and if we need to get back to one oh eight, we'll get back to one oh eight. If there's any specific details as far as locations that you see as particularly dangerous, if you give us that information, we can evaluate that and possibly get state traffic commission approval to provide some type of traffic calming there.
Sure. And, and through, through the, this commission, would that be the vehicle?
That would be the, the best vehicle.
Okay.
If you've got suggestions or specifics, they can take that into consideration.
Sure.
I can have that placed on the agenda for you.
Sure.
If you want to attend the meeting, you can-
Yeah, that'd be-
Attend and converse with the members then.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. All right, super. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
Thanks for coming forward. No problem. So any other comments from interested citizens? If not, we'll move on to the town manager's report. Steve?
I have nothing other than the items that have been prepared for the council in the last two packages. I'll answer any questions on that.
Any questions? So Steve, Jim?
Yes, maybe for the folks at home that might be watching the CDGB grant that came in, ninety-one million. Just explain why it's a little less, but how well we've done-
Thousand. I wish it was ninety-one million. Ninety-one thousand, Jim.
Ninety-one thousand, I'm sorry, ninety-one thousand, excuse me. Zeros.
That would be a lot of zeros.
That's a lot of zeros.
We received notice earlier last week that the governor's office announced that South Kingstown would receive a community development block grant in the amount of ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's lower than what we have seen in recent years. One of the, the reasons that it's lower is that the state chose not to provide dollars to the town for the housing rehabilitation grant program. That's a grant program which is run on behalf of the community through community development, the, through the CAP agency, South County Community Action. South County Community Action provides opportunities for owner occupants or owner with a, a second unit to be able to receive grants that would be for code enforcement purposes. At that time, there's usually other improvements that are made to the houses, which may require additional monies that they would borrow through the banks. In the past year, the CDBG money from the prior fiscal year has been, been, being used. At this point, there's approximately ninety thousand dollars that's available, so that this program won't be shut down at all over the next year. What will be important is to ensure that the money is re-appropriated in the two thousand and twelve allocation on CDBG. That application will be filed probably in February, I believe, is when we start that process again. And the, the loan program will be a component of that. There were also several major grant requests that did not receive funding this year, that we were hopeful would receive funding. But the, the monies, we had originally asked for the seventy thousand on the rehab program, that was not included in the grant award. There was also a first-year request for assistance to the housing authority, that was not approved by the state. There was also money for the South County Hospital that we had asked for. That wasn't approved. And a major grant, which was the Network Rhode Island, to set up a program in South Kingstown to provide for, a pilot program for education and training in the amount of forty thousand that was, was denied. We'd also asked for eighty thousand dollars for the improvements that are necessary at the, the old annex of the senior, senior services program. So those are the types of things that we didn't get. I think that there was more limitations in the amount of money that was available statewide. And hopefully, next year, we'll be more successful in being able to attract those dollars.
Kath, I just want to make a comment. Steve, I received a phone call tonight from a person in reference to, I think it's Network of Rhode Island, just opened up an office looking for training for people that are unemployed. And I believe that that office is only open for three months, and they wanted to express concern here at the town council with the number of people unemployed, that if there's anything that we can do to try to keep that open for longer than three months. So I'm just bringing a phone call that was, came into my house tonight. Just bringing it to the table.
Can't agree with you more.
Okay, any other questions? And, nope, my town solicitor is at a, another meeting this evening. Next is appointments. And Polly, I'm gonna hand the mic to you.
Thank you, Cassie. We have several reappointments to make. For the Conservation Commission, Dorian Boardman and Jean Wetlawfer, and their term would go till August two thousand thirteen.
Second.
It is September, excuse me.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay.
And the last one is for the historic district commission, Heber Yonkin, for a term of three years. Richard Yonkin.
Richard.
Richard Yonkin, for a term of three years. And his term would be up. Dale, what's he, which?
December? December two thousand, no, it would be December two thousand-
This year.
And be appointed.
He'll be reappointed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next one.
And the next is a reappointment of Patricia Breslin-illipil for the housing authority. And that's for five years, and that would be two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next one.
And the next is a reappointment of Patricia Breslin-illipil for the housing authority. And that's for five years, and that would be two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And that is it, Cassie.
Okay, so appointments are done. Next, we have, we did new business item. A is done. We go to new business item D, a resolution authorizing award of bid to International Salt, six five five Northern Boulevard, Summit, Pennsylvania, eighteen four eleven, for road salt at a unit price of seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents per ton delivered, and is further described in the memorandum from the public service director to the town manager. Steve?
Yes, the, the town purchases the salt that we use on, on our roads for icing through the state master contract. Earlier this year, the state awarded a contract to Morton Salt. That contract has now been assumed by International Salt. International Salt's price for delivery to South Kingstown within that master price agreement for the ten, eleven year will be seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents. And that's down from seventy-five dollars and eighty-four cents in the current year. The purchase of salt, this is a major acquisition for the town on an as-need basis. We use approximately nineteen hundred and fifty tons of salt over the course of the year. So we're looking at a cost of around a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars if we have a severe winter. The master price agreement provides us with the most viable option to be able to get the proper deliveries on salt, as well as the, at the lowest available price. I'd recommend the council approve as presented on the agenda.
Fifty a ton, that's a savings, definitely. Any questions? So Steve, Jim?
Yes, Steve. How is this stuff shipped here? Rail, truck, ship? How do we get the loads of salt to Rhode Island?
It comes to the-
And where are the Morton's salt mines?
It goes to the port of Providence. I believe it's delivered by ship, is it not, John? And then they deliver it into each of the different regional areas with, with full trailer dumps.
And do we, do we know where the salt mines are? Are they domestic? Are they international? Where's the salt, where's it mined?
I have no idea where the salt's coming from.
I'll look that up. I will look that up. But thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I have seen the big port in, in Illinois, where they have that big Morton's thing where we usually do with that Whacker Boulevard. I always, I remember driving by it. Quite a vision every year. We do the salt. I was a little upset that, but for a dollar fifty a ton, I don't really care. About the place in Chicago, that is. All right, no other discussion. It's been moved, and I think seconded. Maybe I didn't get a second on that one. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, and next is a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at eight forty-five.